Thanks, everybody, for your patience, as I got all my things together there. I'll go ahead and call the meeting for Missoula City Council on September 22 to order at 6:03 PM. And before we get started with the agenda, if you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Thank you very much. So just to let folks know, we have Justice Redding in the driver's seat back there. She's doing the the meeting mechanics for us and will be representing the City Clerk's office this evening. And so we'll go ahead and do roll call now. Justice, when you're ready.
Thank you, Mayor. Beginning roll call for September 22nd, beginning with Andrea Davis.
Present.
Stacy Anderson. Mertebacera.
Present.
Bob Campbell.
Here.
Daniel Carlino.
Present.
Sierra Farmer. Gwen Jones.
Present.
Kristen Jordan.
Present.
Eric Melson. Mike Nugent.
Present.
Amber Sherrill.
Present.
Sandra Vaseka. We have Cora.
Okay. Thank you very much. With that, we'll move on to item number two, which is approval of the minutes. And we do have two sets of minutes for your consideration this evening. One from September 15th, the other from September 17th, which was a special city council meeting on Wednesday, September 17th. That's why they're so so close together. Any council members have any changes or any questions about the minutes as submitted? I'm not seeing any here in the room nor online. Then those minutes will remain as submitted. Thank you very much. Okay, next, we have our committee schedule for this coming Wednesday. And Ms. Redding, would you review for us the committee schedule? And if there are any changes to the upcoming committee schedule this week?
We just have one change under the Public Safety, Health and Operations Committee. An item title was changed to better reflect the contract. That would be the Black Knight Services Agreement, Parks and Right of Way.
Great. So same committee item title changed of the document. Is that right?
That is correct.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Ms. Redding. All right, that committee schedule is set for this coming Wednesday, the 24th. Those committee meetings will start at 9:00 AM and go through 3:40 as scheduled. Um, we now have special presentations and proclamations. We don't have any neighborhood council updates this evening, but we do have a proclamation. And this is for Climate Solutions Week. I'll go ahead and I will read that aloud. This is in conjunction with the County of Missoula. Here we go. Whereas human-caused climate change is resulting in more extreme weather patterns, wildfire smoke and extreme temperatures, and scientists urge us all to rapidly decrease fossil fuel pollution to keep our environment safe and healthy. And whereas we are more aware than ever of achievable solutions to reduce the impacts of the climate crisis and build resiliency in our communities, such as electrifying our buildings using clean energy, planting and caring for trees, and investing in sustainable transportation and infrastructure. And whereas Missoula County and the City of Missoula have committed to implementing the Climate Ready Missoula Plan, to using 100% clean electricity in the urban area by 2030, and to a joint Electrify Missoula campaign in collaboration with Climate Smart Missoula. And whereas we all play a part in addressing this unprecedented climate crisis, from us here at local government to all residents and businesses, and we must address, and we must all address it together with urgency. And whereas we know it is not too late to act, and our actions now will have lasting impacts on our future, we know we can and must eliminate fossil fuel use in our transportation, buildings, operations and lives. And we know we can build a better future, not based on the premise of sacrifice, but based on our ability to transform. Therefore, be it resolved, we, Missoula County and the City of Missoula, do hereby proclaim September 27th through October 5th as Climate Solutions Week, which will kick off in Caris Park with Climate Fest, an event to inform, educate and energize Missoula County and city residents so we can meet this moment capably with urgency together. All right. And we do have Amy Sillenberg here with Climate Smart, to Climate Smart Missoula, to come and say a few words. Come on up, Amy.
Thank you so much for this resolution. And yeah, just really quick, Amy Sillenberg with Climate Smart Missoula. And this is our third annual Climate Solutions Week. We've done the festival, or it used to be called the Expo, a number of years. But we now have a whole week of solutions. We really loved partner with city and the county and a whole lot of other groups. So we just invite you all to join us Saturday or for events throughout the week. Almost everything is free. Again, there's a lot of partner groups and there's things during the day and the evenings. And you can find the schedule at missoulaclimatic.org. So thank you for the resolution. It's going to be a fantastic week. It's super climate positive, lots of things to do, lots of creative events, and we thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Amy. We are happy to share this proclamation. Thank you for your partnership and your great work. Very much appreciate you being here this evening as well and for the week's activities. And that is climateaction.org. Missoulaclimatic.org. Got it. All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay. So that does wrap up our special presentations and proclamations this evening. And we do have one public hearing on Agenda Item Number Five. That public hearing is the end-of-year report for CDBG, which is Community Development Block Grant and Home Program Year 2024. And we do have a couple of staff members that are on deck here. And Kendra Lissam, I think it's either Kendra or Lisa Bauer that is presenting. Whenever you are ready to give the staff report for this public hearing, we are ready for you.
All right. Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so let me share my screen. All right. So thank you. As Mayor Davis said, I'm Kendra Lissam, and this is Lisa Bauer. And we're grants administrators in the Community Development Division. We're here to present on our end-of-year report for our federal Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG, and Home Investment Partnership Programs, or Home Funds. One of the obligations that the city must fulfill as an entitlement city for the CDBG and home programs is to prepare a yearly consolidated annual performance and evaluation report, lovingly called the CAEPER. Each program year runs July 1st through June 30th. So our presentation today is to talk about our outcomes for July 1st, 2024, through June 30th, 2025. And then, as a reminder, these are federal funds and they don't come out of the city's budget. So in 2024, we were awarded about $350,000 in home and $533,000 in CDBG. Home funds can be used for homeowner rehab, rehab, home buyer assistance, rental development and rental subsidy. In 2024, we funded one home project and continued progress on a large rehab project that was funded in 2023. And CDBG can be used for a variety of different activities, including homeownership and rental acquisition, rehabilitation, housing education and public services. And this year, we funded four CDBG projects. So with CDBG, we funded priority rehab at Homeward's Orchard Gardens Affordable Apartments. Rehab included the replacement of heat pumps, flooring and the water heater. And this work will preserve 35 affordable units for low to moderate income individuals. We also supported the continuation of an owner-occupied rehabilitation program for loans to homeowners with low and moderate incomes. And so far, we've assisted three homeowners and we have the capacity to help up to four additional households. And then, CDBG funds were also used to increase home accessibility with the installation of wheelchair ramps for households with disabilities. And thanks to this program, 18 ramps have been installed and we have capacity for up to additional about 10 households. We also funded the acquisition of a single-family home for placement into a community land trust. This will ensure permanent affordability for one household, while the lot has the potential to be developed to add an additional two homes to the CLT.
I'll pass it over to Lisa.
Thanks, Kendra. So our home project for the last year was the rehabilitation of the 12-unit affordable rental complex Fire Wheel Court. The project included both exterior and interior rehabilitation, including exterior lighting and fencing upgrades, as well as water heater and furnace repairs and replacement, among other things. This project is benefiting 12 households and was completed earlier this month. And then, we also wanted to highlight our work with Creekside Apartments. So this project was actually funded using earlier funds in 2023. But due to the complex nature of such a large project involving low-income housing tax credits and multiple financial institutions, rehabilitation work actually started in June of this year. Home funds are going toward the exterior rehabilitation, as well as the replacement of AC units, water heaters and additional interior repairs. This project will benefit 161 households. And our partner for both of these projects was Homeward. Now, talking a little bit about our outcomes for both CDBG and home, and we'll pause on this slide for a minute for you to take a look at it. But here's an overview. You can see that CDBG and home dollars make an important difference in our community, benefiting more than 200 households living in affordable rental units, as well as low and moderate income homeowners and persons with disabilities. There we go. Great. So then, lastly, future funding. So while home and CDBG funds are clearly a much-needed resource in our communities, there are some concerns about the future of these programs. The great news is that as of today, we received our signed grant agreements from HUD, which funds us through June of next year at more or less similar funding levels to what we have now. However, the more negative side of that is the debate about what our funding will look like after June is really up in the air at this point. It's what's under debate in Congress right now. Both the House and the Senate versions of the federal FY '26 budget bill as of today have kept the CDBG program. The House, however, is proposing getting rid of the home program completely, in line with the President's proposed budget. Senate has proposed keeping it, though, so it's really unclear where it's going to go from here in terms of middle ground and the future of home programming. There is a draft bill as well in the House in a different committee that is revising the requirements of home to actually make it more manageable and less restrictive, which we could see as potentially positive change should home be funded in the future. So given that there's likely to be either a government shutdown or a continuing resolution at the federal level after September 30th, we're unlikely to know much more about the future of home and CDBG funding for at least a few months. But we'll continue to monitor the situation and hope that both programs receive future funding to continue to tackle affordable housing.
And then, we'd also like to wish anyone who'd like to comment on or have any questions for any of these projects or this report to scan the QR code. Or you can email either myself or Lisa at the email addresses on the screen. And that's all we have for today.
Okay.
I can unshare my screen here. There we go.
Okay. So Kendra, thank you very much. And Lisa, thank you both. This is, there is a recommended motion. We just heard the staff presentation. And it's a review of the City of Missoula Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. Is this, this is required during a public hearing? But is this, is there a required vote on this?
Not for the CDBG and home program.
Okay. So I just wanted to be clear. The federal government does ask that it's a public hearing. There is not a council vote. It is basically informational. And it will be an opportunity now for council members to ask questions, also for the public to comment, and then council to make comments as well. Do council members have any questions for staff? Stacy, sorry, Counselor Anderson, right at the top. Sorry about that.
Thanks so much. So thanks. Somebody says it's number two on there. Appreciate the information. And I guess my question is in regards to kind of the opportunity costs or kind of the uncertainty with what the federal government is doing, not doing what, funding, not funding. You know, it seems like a day-by-day roller coaster. How, what have you heard from the development community or kind of some of your partners that you work with? And how they're kind of looking at strategizing for future projects as they kind of put them into the pipeline? You know, it takes not only these funds, but partnering with, you know, developers who know how to do this and as well as, you know, opportunities at the state level for various tax credit projects. So I would love for you to kind of talk a little bit about that because I think it's an important component that, you know, is kind of missed out on with the uncertainty that we're facing.
Good. Thank you for your question, Counselor Anderson. Ms. Lissam, do you want to take that question?
Yeah, you know, we haven't really heard. Right now, we're just operating as we're going to have the funding, you know, in the future. We've seen a few projects that have talked to us and then decided to just go the Lytech route, for instance. But we haven't really heard specifically that they're not coming because of the uncertainty. I don't know if that helps answer your question. That's what I know.
No, yeah, appreciate that. And just, I guess if that situation changes, it'd be great if you could let us know so that we can, you know, kind of figure out how to bring attention to it. Be happy to do that.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Lissam. And I will also, Counselor Anderson, I have sent layers, letters to our federal delegation from the City of Missoula, representing the City of Missoula and our accomplishments utilizing these federal dollars, indicating how we have leveraged them into a number of different projects. And you saw some examples here today. And so I have been in communication and will continue to be with our federal delegation, encouraging them to keep this in the federal budget.
May I ask if you've received a response from any of our federal delegation in regards to that communication?
I have received a response from Representative Congressman Zinke's office. And that was particularly because it was at a time when we had concern at the, at the House level that it was going to make it through. Although I have sent some communications now both to the full federal delegation. I have not received a response yet, but I'll check in on that, make sure, double-check on that.
Thanks so much.
Yeah, you bet. Any other questions for staff on this report? Okay. Excellent. Thank you. So before we go, we do have a motion on the floor, even though there's no vote. And so this is, this would be in our Housing and Development Committee. So Counselor Jones, would you go ahead and make the motion? And then we'll open it up for public comment.
Sure. And I think the motion technically was just really in committee in order to set this public hearing for the purpose of having a public hearing. But I will still make this motion that we're not really voting on it. But it is a review of the City of Missoula Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report for HUD-funded programs for Program Year 2024.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Counselor Jones. All right. So motions on the floor. And this is to set the public hearing again for opportunity to share with the public the use of these funds and what projects locally they have helped, helped fund. Is there any public comment on this agenda item? Not seeing any in the room. I do see that there is a hand raised online. Carissa Trujillo, please, when you are ready, go ahead and unmute yourself and I'll help you keep track on this side with time.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Carissa Trujillo, T-R-U-J-I-L-L-O. And I'm the Executive Director of Homeward. And I just wanted to share my appreciation for the support of these projects in Missoula. The CPDI staff has been incredible for us to work with to preserve these homes that Missoulians can afford. And I know we've said it before, but we'll continue to say these, these funds really make a big difference when it comes to those larger capital improvement projects that we need done on these properties, where we're bringing in lower rents so that we can keep those rents affordable for our neighbors and friends. So just want to appreciate all of you for your time and really appreciate the city staff for the endless hours that they spend helping us through all these projects with these federal funding sources. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Trujillo. Appreciate those supportive comments. And we greatly appreciate our partnership with Homeward as well. Any other members of the public wishing to make comment this evening? Any online? Okay. I'm not seeing any. Then that wraps up the public comment on this agenda item. We'll bring it back to council to see if there are any final comments. Okay. I'm not seeing any final comments. This is not a voting item. So we'll go ahead and conclude this public hearing. And very much appreciate Ms. Lissam and Ms. Bauer for your work and for showing, helping show the community the progress we're making on homes that are affordable and some other opportunities to help make homes more accessible for more of our neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. You bet. That wraps up our public hearing. We have no new business under item number six. So we'll move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is already very short. It's about to be shorter. After the committee meeting of the whole last week, there was just some slight confusion on where 8.2 would be placed on the agenda. So rather than the Ward 1 Vacancy 2025, under the consent agenda, we're going to go ahead and move that to committee reports. So that will be heard here in just a little bit, 9.1.CB, Ward 1 Vacancy 2025. So with that, we'll go ahead and hear the consent agenda. And so, Ms. Redding, if you'll go ahead and read that aloud and share on the screen. Again, it's only 8.1.
Thank you, Mayor. The consent agenda is just 8.1. Approve accounts payable for claims, checks dated September 23rd, 2025 in the amount of $3,408,753.80.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Redding. Is there any public comment on this agenda item, on the consent agenda this evening? Okay. I'm not seeing any in the room. Just check online here to see if there's any public comment for the consent agenda online. All right. Not seeing any public comment. That wraps up public comment for the consent agenda. And we can go ahead and hear a voice vote for this item, please.
Thank you, Mayor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? The consent agenda passes.
Okay. Thank you very much. We have one item under regular business, as noted. Item 9.1.CB, that is Ward 1 Vacancy, 2025. There is a recommended motion that did pass out of committee last week. There's no staff presentation, but I will turn it over to Counselor Sherrill to both, to introduce this item and then hear the motion when you're ready. And then we'll make sure we have an opportunity to take public comment and hear.
Yeah, thank you. And we've had, we've had pretty extended conversations around this. And this is a recommendation for filling the vacancy in Ward 1. As our council rules say, when we become aware of a vacancy, not a possibility of a vacancy in the future, but when we become aware of the vacancy, which I did officially on September 4th, or when we receive official notice of the vacancy, which also happened on September 4th, we need to fill that seat within 30 days. So what we did is we started thinking about this when we got that official notice on September 4th and became aware that there was a vacancy on that date. We met and kind of started trying to figure out if we put someone in within that 30 days and then have someone that this body, not the general public, decided they wanted to sit here until the end of the year or because we're already in the election cycle, if we should, within the spirit of the law and within the spirit of our council rules, try to get a publicly elected person in that office as quickly as possible. And we absolutely believe that that is what the spirit of the law is. And we believe that that's the right thing to do democratically. You know, I say that, I say that knowing we can go through the whole process, too. We can go through that whole process. And then city council will decide who sits in that seat. Six of us, because it's only a simple majority, and we have 11 people on council. So that would mean that six people in this community would decide who sits in that seat for the next three months and who votes on code reform at the end of the year, one of the biggest things that will affect our community into the future. So, you know, thinking that through, we came up with this plan to get someone in more quickly that was democratically elected instead of, you know, maybe just six of us deciding who would fill that seat. So I, that is, that is what this is in the spirit of. And I will, at this point, read the recommended motion because we have no additional information. We had a pretty, pretty big conversation about this on Wednesday. So I recommend that we approve a resolution to fill the vacancy in Ward 1 and the duly-elected representative of Ward 1 as determined by the general election on November 4th, 2025, as found in the resolution.
Excellent.
I don't, I don't have any additional comments.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate that, Counselor Sherrill. And I'll go ahead and go to council questions. I knew, I know that end or comment, we'll hear public comment on this agenda item as well. Counselor Campbell.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm making a motion to amend this motion to the original language, which is approve a resolution to fill the vacancy in Ward 1 with the duly-elected representative of Ward 1 as determined by the general election on November 4th, 2025, following confirmation by the County Elections Office's canvas procedure as found in the resolution. And I'd like to speak to it.
Go right ahead, Counselor Campbell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to share my screen. And so my primary concern with this, I mean, I think everyone here agrees we would rather have someone duly-elected, as verbiage says in either resolution, into that seat rather than appoint somebody. To me, appointing, it's now good luck to the public. I think someone who rightfully wins an election should have that. But I bring to your attention Montana Code 1337-127. This comes right off of a certificate of election that you get once you've been canvassed. A certificate of election may not be granted to any candidate until the candidate or the candidate's treasurer has filed the reports and statements and must be filed pursuant to the provisions of this chapter. A candidate for an elective office may not assume the powers and duties of that office until the candidate has received a certificate of election as provided by law. I'll read that again. A candidate for elective office may not assume the powers and duties of that office until the candidate has received a certificate of election as provided by law. A certificate of election may only be issued by the public official responsible for issuing a certificate or a commission of election. So that tells me right there, we're jumping the gun. I mean, as much as anybody want to get somebody duly-elected, we keep using that phraseology a lot, into the seat. But we shouldn't be so hasty as to go against Montana statute, I think. I think the way the, the recommended motion is put out there, I think we do violate Montana Code. And I think we need to go through a process of canvas with whoever the winner is and, you know, congratulate them. But they need to be canvassed first before they're sworn in. So that's why I made the amended motion.
Okay, excellent. You bet. Counselor Campbell, can you summarize your amendment again?
Yes, ma'am, Mayor. The amendment will be, and this comes right off the language from the committee agenda from last week. Approve a resolution to fill the vacancy in Ward 1 with the duly-elected representative of Ward 1 as determined by the general election on November 4th, 2025, following confirmation by the County Elections Office's canvas procedure as found in the resolution.
Okay. Thank you very much for summarizing that. And I do see that the sponsor, Council President Sherrill, you have your hand raised, and so did Counselor Nugent. Would you like to address Counselor Campbell's amendment first before I move on?
I'd just like to say one quick, quick thing.
I, I'd just like to say one quick, quick thing and then I'll let Mike say whatever he was going to say. This is not an election. This is an appointment. And either way, we need to appoint someone. We either need to follow our, the 30 day plan and appoint someone right now, or we need to appoint someone right after the election. So it is an appointment. It's not, it is not an election. It's an appointment, which I think is different. And I think we need to be aware of that as we discuss this.
Okay. And so I'll just ask you in this moment, would you be willing to accept this as a friendly amendment?
I will not, no.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Counselor Nugent.
I'd like to add, I won't be willing to do that because I think that we need to get someone in there, that office, to represent that district as quickly as possible. And that was one thing that, you know, that, that gave us pause in doing this plan, but we still thought it was the best.
Thank you, Counselor Cheryl. Counselor Nugent.
Thank you, Mayor Davis. I will not be supporting the amendment. I appreciate the comments from Council President Cheryl. Want to kind of reemphasize this because I think there was some confusion by Counselor Campbell at the committee meetings last week. Whoever wins the election in November, their four-year term starts in January. And so that, that clock doesn't start for that four-year term. And whoever wins that race and is after the canvas, receives the certificate and all that, they start in January. So whoever we appoint, that term, that is to complete the current term and their service ends at the end of this calendar year, or sometimes January 1st or 2nd, whatever the swear-in date is. So that's really, we're appointing someone to finish a term and then they would start their first full term. So if somehow unprecedented things happen, because it's, you know, in the resolution as, as came out of committee last week, if the vote total is not within the automatic trigger of a recount, we would follow through and appoint that person to finish the term. I believe that the resolution makes sense as it was written and was voted on because we are just following the will of the people, but we're asking that person to come start serving right away as opposed to waiting and holding it vacant any longer. I think that, that getting caught up on the duly elected thing, I understand what you're saying, but that is duly elected for the term. As we talked about, there's no data that's overturned in an election at the local level outside of that recount margin. And I think that I have complete faith in our elections office and believe that we would be following the will of the people as it's written. And we're better off getting them in office ASAP.
Thank you, Counselor Nugent. Not seeing any other council questions. And with that, we have an amendment on the floor. We have a motion on the floor and an amendment. I'll turn it over to public comment to see. Counselor Campbell, is this something for after public comment? Or is there anything that you wish to address in regards to your?
I can wait for public comment.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Turning it over to the public. If there's anybody that wishes to comment on the motion or the amendment, please come on up now. And I know you know this, but please say your name for the record and I'll go ahead and time keep up you, up here for you. We have three minutes.
Sure will. I've spoken here before. My name is Karen Giuliani and I live in Ward one. And I just find that this whole scenario here is taking up a lot. What do I need to do?
Just speak into the mic a little bit closer, if you would. Thank you.
So that I, I, I really think that what have solved this is for you just to follow the rule. Anyway, you know, I'm disappointed as I think this decision that you're making here is important. And I feel like it's kind of just like, oh, well, let's just get rid of the rule and we'll just go ahead with what we think is more democratic. And I don't know, I, it doesn't feel right to me, especially in light of things that are, are happening in our country here, you know, that, oh, we just won't follow the rules, I guess. And so the rule that's in place of being dismissed with a statement that now it's more democratic way of being followed. And the reason we have counselors is that, so that we're represented to the fullest extent. And that's why there's rules and that state law that addresses what happens when there is a vacancy. And there should have been notice, not just vacating this counselor position. I think you guys all should have had plenty of notice and prepared for the vacancy. And I just don't see that that happened. And so now we're left in Ward one without representation for a while. And then you're going to have to make other changes because usually when someone's elected to this counselor position, they have to wait until January to serve. But now it's just going to, that's going to be all changed. And so the person who then is elected in November is now going to be taking over. And, and there was something too about, well, this person would be more prepared for something that's coming up in December or some code reform or something like that. But if this had been followed regularly, then that, that person wouldn't have come on until January anyway. So I just feel that now my ward right now will be unrepresented until November, when you will have to then appoint that person, it sounds like, to then now take that position as counselor. So I'm, I'm just disappointed in the process here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Giuliani. Any other public comment this evening?
Hi, my name's Mary Giuliani. I have also spoken about this issue. And what I'd like to comment on today is at the end of the discussion on Wednesday, there were counselor comments that were given. Some of the counselors acknowledged the situation that we're in currently and why we're in this situation. They didn't minimize a breaking of council rules. They didn't minimize the breaking of Montana state law. So that made me and the public feel acknowledged, seen, heard. So for those council members, I want to say thank you very much. From other council members, I heard a lot of sympathy and empathy given for somebody who owns multiple homes in multiple parts of Missoula and has spent several months shifting their homes. I heard how difficult it is to remodel your home. Given the situation that we're in in Missoula, especially given that the Johnson Street Shelter just closed and many people don't have any homes, not one home, not a shelter. It was very telling to hear the sympathy and the empathy that was given by some of the counselors in absence of the concern for the residents in Ward one, which are now left without full representation. So to the counselors that are concerned about this and are acknowledging of this situation, thank you. And also, I'm sorry that you were put in this position to begin with because I know that it leaves you all fielding some questions and concerns and possibly distrust from the citizens for a decision that you yourself did not make. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Giuliani. Any other public comment this evening? Not seeing any on this agenda item. So I will move to folks that are online to see if there's anybody online wishing to speak to this agenda item, public comment for this agenda item. Okay. Not seeing any there. Then that does wrap up our public comment for this agenda. I'll bring it back to council comments. And I see that Counselor Campbell, you have the, the first hand raised. And then I see you, Counselor Carlino.
Yes, thank you again, Madam Mayor. I guess just to wrap this up from my perspective on the amendment, you know, it seems to me in some respect, we're trying to have our cake and eat it too here. And I think Montana code's pretty clear as who to, who could perform elect duties in the state of Montana. I think that code I cited makes it abundantly clear. But some of the retort has been, well, we're really just appointing someone in the interim until, you know, January 1st. Well, why don't we say appointment? Well, it's because I, I, I think we don't say appointment because there's a appointment procedure that, you know, to this lady's point, that we could be following, you know. But that said, you know, I, I think we do need to get somebody in that's, that seat who's likely to be the winner of the election in November. You know, barring, you know, a close race that would involve a recount. I just don't understand the rush to do it in this way and do it before canvas when, I mean, I haven't looked at the council schedule. When we talk about like one council meeting, one set of committees difference between the two dates. So, you know, I, I just think in indifference to following state statute to get more support for my amendment. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Counselor Campbell. Counselor Carlino.
Oh, thanks. You know, I think I'll be in support of Counselor Campbell's amendment. You know, with our last election, you know, at first we thought Sean McCoy won. And then after we did the canvas, then we found out that it was a tie. And, you know, I think this amendment makes sense. And ultimately, I think, you know, we could have known about this vacancy far in advance. You know, something we expected and under city council rule 31A6, it says whenever the city council has sufficient advance notice of a future vacancy in an elected office, the city council shall attempt to fill that future vacancy in advance of the actual vacancy. So I just think that we should have followed that rule ahead of time. But I'm in favor of both this amendment and the proposal in front of us, regardless if this amendment doesn't pass. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Carlino. Any other comments from city council? Counselor Nugent.
Thanks, Mayor. I think it's important to note that there's a whole lot of commenting that I think is politicking and that's fine. It's the season, it is what it is. McCoy Basica was within the automatic recount range. So that situation, the person would not get appointed, covered for in this right now. Council cannot assume future action. So become aware of means if the clerk becomes aware that a seat is vacant or the council president receives a resignation vacating a seat. I understand what people are saying that based on all sorts of things, sure, we knew. And I would point out that even the council members who are criticizing right now could have followed the same rule if they're saying that. They could have brought it up and they chose not to because we were not officially made aware of any vacancy. People could change their minds, all sorts of things happen. We have to fill things when they happen. Mr. Campbell, to your comments, I, I, again, I understand what you're getting at, I guess. But if there wasn't an appointment right now, we wouldn't have any say in this at all. It would just be people take over in January. So the mere act of us voting on this is acknowledging that there's an appointment, whether the word appointment is used or not. Does not make this more scandalous than it really is. I think kind of proving your point, all of us on council are saying, let's just hear what the voters say and let that person fill the seat. We could tomorrow pick someone. And I think that the majority of us would probably pick a person they like who's running right now, which would be unfair. So we're trying to do it another way. I mean, I said it last time, but it, it seems like this council is trying to do the right thing. And a whole lot of people who don't actually understand how things work are jumping all over it. And that's fine. That's the public process, but it's the reality. And I would just kind of wrap up by saying, you know, serving in public office is not for the faint of heart. Lots of us do it for different reasons. But the idea that someone is not empathetic because they might be moving across town is ridiculous. And I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you, Counselor Nugent and Counselor Cheryl.
Yeah, I just want to correct something that was, was said earlier. I appreciate Mike's comments. Our rules read as follows. As soon as the city council president, being me, becomes aware of a vacancy, not of a future vacancy, of a vacancy, because there was not a vacancy, there was a publicly elected person in that seat until September 4th. In an elected, so I'll start again. As soon as the city council president becomes aware of a vacancy in an, in elected city or office, or as soon as the city council president receives official notice that an elected city office will become vacant at a specific date in the future. So it's not when I know that, when I think possibly there, there would be a future vacancy. It's when I receive notice of a future vacancy or receive notice. And I think that people are taking that sentence about future and putting it up into the first part of the sentence. And that is not how our council rules rate.
Thank you, Counselor Cheryl. And Counselor Jordan.
Yeah, thank you. I really didn't want to say anything tonight, but I, I just am so tired of listening to the majority of you protect Jennifer Savage. We knew she was going to leave.
Point of order. Point of order, Counselor Jordan. Point of order, Counselor Jordan.
We also have seen Ms. Savage.
Wait. Point of order, go ahead, Counselor Anderson.
I've been punished for that. No, look, I am over this.
Point of order. Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. This has absolutely.
Oh, that's, yes, yes. Everybody's in it together. I am so tired of seeing everybody protect Jennifer Savage.
Point of order.
And I get to say what I want to say. I get to say it. What's the point of order, Ms. Anderson? That you don't like what I'm saying? Because that's not a rule.
Go right ahead with your point of order, Counselor Anderson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, for acknowledging my point of order. And basically, this has absolutely nothing to do with Jennifer Savage as an individual. This has everything to do with filling the vacancy on council that was created with her official notice. So I don't think that this has anything to do with that. I think it is definitely a rule for, a rule violation of impugning motives. And so that is why I called it point of order.
So Ms. Savage gets to disparage me on the public record.
Counselor Anderson, thank you for your comments. Counselor Jordan, you're able to speak to the amendment? If you can speak to the amendment?
I am trying to and I'm being corralled into saying what you want me to say. And I'm, I'm sick of it. I can't. I cannot say what you want me to say right now. Because what I see is a group of people protecting somebody that they want to get this position and they're doing everything that they can. And I'm also completely outraged by the fact that Ms. Savage was able to lie about me on the public record.
Point of order. Okay, we're done. We're done with that, Counselor Jordan. This is the point of order and this, this meeting will be maintained. If you cannot maintain decorum and the process that you committed to when you took oath of office, I will have to gavel out of this meeting right now. So that is your choice. But we will listen to Counselor Anderson first. Okay. Counselor Jordan, this is for you. Go ahead and turn the meeting off, Mary. We are going to take a five-minute resource because Counselor Jordan seems to be able to not be able to maintain the flow of the meeting. And we will not continue.
Market rate homes for upwards of half a million dollars, when according to the Missoula Housing Authority report, in October twenty twenty-four, more than twenty-four hundred people in our community are on the waitlist for housing vouchers. A socioeconomic impact statement within the Midtown Master Plan found the combination of lower incomes in Midtown compared to Missoula overall and rising housing prices could intensify displacement risk for vulnerable populations and may already be causing households to relocate. These five to six hundred thousand dollar market rate homes will inevitably increase land valuation in the area, then taxes and rent will increase, and the vicious cycle of taxing people out of their homes and gentrification continues. One of my favorite quotes is by Gandhi. The true measure of any society can be found in how it treats its most vulnerable members. We need more creative brains and local tradespeople to collaborate on a plan for this land that prioritizes our vulnerable community members over short-term profit. I hope you all consider this before voting to sell the land. All that being said, a concern even more top of mind is in regard to a comment I made here a couple of weeks ago. I said I read a Missoulian article that reported the developer chosen for the project was an Arizona-based developer. Mr. Nugent said in response, quote, "I've heard several times that this developer is from Arizona, and I would just state that just because the Missoulian writes it doesn't mean it's accurate," end quote. He also said, quote, "I think it's important that things are reported accurately because otherwise misinformation abounds," end quote. If you read the August twenty-eighth Missoulian article, the author does include that the developer moved to Missoula eight years ago and owns a home in the area. This does not change the fact that Miramonte Company's headquarters is located at Eldorado Lodge in Tucson, Arizona. I confirm this by looking at their website. So it was indeed accurately reported by the Missoulian that Miramonte Company is an Arizona-based developer. I wanted to bring this to everyone's attention because journalism and free speech are under attack right now, and city council has a big platform in this town. Using that platform to flippantly discredit a local reporter who accurately reported this story and cast doubt on the integrity of his reporting claiming misinformation abounds is not acceptable and warrants correction. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Giuliani. Any other members of the public wishing to make comment tonight?
Something more important now than all this, whatever y'all call what you're doing. This brochure I picked up somewhere along the line, tax increment in Montana. It's an education here. A locally driven economic development tool. Another hidden is quick facts. If you work real hard, you might find something in this brochure that is correct, but you're gonna have to work for it, work hard for it. Another hidden, how is increment created? Well, pardon me, usually a developer wants to get his pockets filled. They want some city council and MRA to get it done for them. MRA. Should be fired, all of them should be fired. We shouldn't be adding people to, uh, to the MRA, whether they can vote or not. Another one, how is increment created? Another hidden, Ted, tax increment in action. Key terms. By the way, this brochure, I think, is one probably prepared by a few, I think. It wasn't here, but they're all the same. They're all the same. The miss tax increment financing, tax increment in Montana. I'm gonna have to scrape together to see if I can pay my taxes. Certain people in the last election was telling us all what we're gonna do about taxes, save the taxes, reduce the taxes. I wonder if we looked at them now, would the taxes be lower or higher? I'll bet you they're higher, and they will be from now on until y'all's people are in a position, gets their objectives made on their developers. Millions of dollars. Gave the Lambrus organization ten million dollars on shopping.
Thank you for your comments tonight, Mr. Moore. Any other members of the public wishing to make comment? Come on up.
Good evening. Um, my name is Jody Steele. I'm managing owner of North Star Security LLC. Um, there's only a couple of things that I wanted to speak about tonight. Um, one of them, one of them was, um, I was unaware that the city of Missoula had expanded its security needs in the last several years. Um, and so I was kind of surprised, not to take anything away from Black Knight Security, um, I know Wade personally, um, but we never saw where there was a bidding process for those, uh, contracts. Um, so I guess my question would be, in the future, will there be? Um, I don't want to take anything away from any of the other security companies in town, but we would like to maybe be on a level playing field where that's considered, because we are all local businesses. That's all.
Thank you for your comments tonight, Mr. Steele. Any other members of the public wishing to make public comment, general comments, items not on the agenda?
My name's James Hatten. I'm a co-owner, Talos Security. Uh, good evening, uh, Madam Mayor, council members. Uh, yeah, I just wanted to second the, the last speaker. Um, I don't know what the process is for, uh, RFPs, uh, if that's something that the city requires for, uh, the contracts like the Black Knight contract. Uh, so if, if we're remiss in not being aware of when those RFPs are going out, uh, you know, then we accept that. But, uh, if, if that's not happening, that's something that we'd like, like to be, uh, we'd like to have rectified, and we'd like the chance, of course, uh, to bid on what is, you know, ultimately, public funds being used for a, a service that, uh, impacts the public, and, uh, we would like a little bit more clarity on how that process is, uh, moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments this evening. Um, all right, I'll address some of that question when we get up to general comments from the mayor. Um, any other public comment tonight on items not on the agenda?
Hey, Montana, I had another stay at community hospital with the ongoing recurrence of the anxiety of March sixteenth and the past two years of what you advocate, and let's include Black Knight Security, rubber stamping, and advocating March sixteenth and March, April nineteenth, to the fact of the matter, we've got a hate crime going on here, and we've had one going on for the last several years. My question is, it's no different than the appointing of the vacancy and so forth of the individual. When did she not come home to have dinner and wake up to breakfast at the location of Ward One? And when was she parking her car in Rattlesnake? That's the issue. I would want to hear from the neighborhood to the fact of the matter. I do think there's unscrupulous business in the city council. Let's not criticize, um, um, the president, which is the, I can't quite get his name right now, so forth. Let's not criticize the president for what you are, some of the sickest people that I'm aware of, for what I had to put through. for what I had to put through and others and so forth. And that'd be Donald Trump, right? And let's realize June's proclamation in regards to Utah before we criticize the other individual.
Thank you, Mr. Spitzmacher. Any other public comment on items not on the agenda this evening? Not seeing any in the room? How about folks online? Any public comment on items not on the agenda? Okay, not seeing any hands raised online, so that does wrap up our public comment on non-agenda items. And I'll just start with communications from the mayor by mentioning that the city of Missoula does have a notify us page that does identify procurement and bid opportunities. I'm gonna look over to our chief administrative officer to make sure I have that right. So when we are submitting, when we are releasing bids, there is an opportunity to get on an email notification by potential vendors, correct?
Yes, there is that, that notification. Council is going to hear renewals of contracts with Black Knight that was performed under a request or proposal within our procurement timeframe. I don't have the exact dates of that, of when that bid went out, but that, but council will consider those, those contracts on Wednesday.
Okay, thank you for that. There is a notify us page, and also thank you for making myself and council aware of your interests and your businesses. Appreciate that, thank you. I'll go on to just mention a couple of other things under mayor comments. I wanted to just say a few things in regards to Climate Week, and I know that council received an update from our team a few months back. But because it's Climate Solutions Week, I wanted to touch on a few of the city's internal climate work and accomplishments as it relates to the proclamation that I read earlier. And this really is with our shared work with the county of Missoula as well as Climate Smart Missoula. So this year, the city completed our fiscal year 24 municipal greenhouse gas inventory. That was what staff presented to you a few months back. And we have a new energy management software and automated account tracking, which actually helps us report out on real data. This new process makes it much easier to take data-driven action and measure the actual projects, such as the solar array that we have at the wastewater treatment plant. So, you know, ideally, if we're making investments in a solar array to offset our energy consumption, you know, it's a win-win. We're reducing our carbon footprint, and we're reducing the cost to do business, to run electricity for our wastewater system. So it's, it's really helpful to be able to measure the output of those arrays and understand what our eventual payback is. This summer, the climate team also revisited our municipal climate action plan to develop a draft roadmap for implementing climate action strategies over the next three to five years. And so this winter, we will kick off a task force with city leaders and staff to finalize that roadmap and then bring it back to council for discussion. And with, you know, just dramatic changes in federal support for climate action, the city remains committed and creative, exploring all options for moving our municipal and county-wide strategies forward. One thing that occurred recently was the stormwater system through a state grant was able to receive funding for a green roof at the Missoula Public Library. That green roof will do a number of things for stormwater. First, it filters water going back into our aquifer. Second of all, it does natural cooling for the building. And because the library is a learning center, it's an opportunity for the public to better learn how green roofs are a feasible option and how this works in our climate. The city was required to provide local match, and the way we were able to do that was through our Missoula Redevelopment Agency. So the city is required to match, as is the county, seventy-five thousand dollars over two years each. So in total, the city's seventy-five thousand dollars came from the Missoula Redevelopment Agency, and the Missoula Redevelopment Agency was able to make that contribution because that district has succeeded quite well with the investments we've made there and the ability to use tax increment financing for public infrastructure, such as the green roof. So that all fits in, I think, quite well with our Climate Solutions Week. I think it fits in quite well with local solutions that we are deploying and just these really commonsensical, makesense projects that we can, again, reduce our energy consumption, cool our buildings by not adding to the heat island effect, be able to filter out pollutants to our aquifer. We're very excited about that. And, and thank you to Council Jordan for your work in your day job at the Department of Environmental Quality and, excuse me, DNRC for the work to try to get that over the finish line, to get that over the finish line. I'll also mention something because this time of the year, it's very important that we help reduce bear conflict with our fruit trees in our community. And if folks aren't aware of this really great organization out there, it's the Great Bear Foundation. They have a Bears and Apples program, and they basically will go out and pick fruit. They have a bunch of volunteers, a lot of folks that are dedicated to this. And then they, they have a press. They actually press fruit and share cider. It's a wonderful solution, but for so many people that have bountiful fruit trees that ultimately end up luring bears to their home, this is a wonderful solution. So it's the Great Bear Foundation, the Bears and Apples Program. Just wanted to mention that because this is the time of the year. The last thing is, I hope folks take advantage of the Free Shuttle that has kicked off for Marshall Mountain. So in partnership with Mountain Line, there are free shuttles from various locations in town up to Marshall Mountain Park. It's only on Saturdays and Sundays. It runs from 10 to 6:00. There's room for 16 passengers, and there's room for 16 bicycles. So it's a very cool program, and it will run through October 26th, which is generally the end of the mountain bike season for most, not all. And so I just hope folks will take advantage of that. It's brand new this year, and it's something that we should all be really proud of. So with that, I will go ahead and turn it over to council comments, and I'm gonna start with folks online. Council Basera, I see that your camera is turned on. Do you have any council comments this evening?
I don't, thank you.
You're welcome, you bet. How about any other councillors online? Councilor Carlino?
Sure. Yeah, thanks for all the remarks about Climate Week. You know, one thing I did want to comment on is it does feel like freedom of speech is being attacked in our politics nowadays. And I think, you know, even at the city council meetings, we've had quite a few point of orders called people that are geared to public comment or even council members nowadays. And I just think that it's for the best that we let everybody say what they have to say, and, and then we can say what we have to say. And I think that's how democracy works, works the best. So, you know, I guess I just want to flag that I think we can do a little bit better at these meetings of upholding free speech. But I appreciate everybody's comments today, and thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you, Councilor Carlino. How about other folks online? Councilor Jordan, do you have any comments in general council comments?
Yeah, look, I will just agree with what Daniel said. I'm exceptionally frustrated in how the points of order seem to work one way, but not the other way. I've seen councillors say things that aren't true about other councillors and not be point-of-ordered or reprimanded. And then councillors who do speak to the truth are point-of-ordered. And I believe that Missoula City voters notice this. And we need to, we need to make sure that we're applying our rules fairly because right now we're not. For councillors to not even be able to say what they think and feel without getting point-of-ordered when it is how they think and feel is exceptionally frustrating, and it's, it's an abuse of power for, for those to cut off public comment and/or comment from city councillors because they don't like what they're hearing, yet not apply the same rule when councillors are disparaging other councillors with a litany of untruths. And if you don't see it, it's because you're benefiting from the bias. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments, Councilor Jordan. Councilor Bazika, do you have any comments to share this evening?
I'll pass tonight, but thank you.
You bet. All right, that does wrap up all of our councillors that are online. And so I'll go ahead and start here in the room, Council Cheryl.
I'm gonna pass.
Okay. Thank you. And Council Anderson?
I'll pass as well tonight, thanks so much.
You bet. Council Nugent?
Thanks, Mayor. There was a quote earlier tonight that I thought was interesting. It was, "You don't like what I'm saying because that's not a rule." I think that that's just applicable to a lot of things that have come up tonight. I really don't like points of order. I like to hear people talk, and so I agree with some of that. I think sometimes we need to let things play out. But I also think that there is a gross misunderstanding sometimes in comments on council from council members, maybe even, or often even, that if someone says something about me that I don't like, they've somehow broken a rule. And I don't think that that's at all the spirit of our rules. In fact, I think our rules are trying to give everybody opportunity to, to speak and to be heard as best they can. But there are times when, especially if people aren't here to speak to or defend themselves, where our rules say that if, you know, for instance, a public commenter calls out specific people, they should be redirected to the chair. I mean, those are, those are normal rules of order. I, as, you know, maybe one of the more frequent topics of people's public comments over the last four years, have never had a problem with people talking about me in public comments, nor, nor do I tonight. So thank you for coming and exercising your right to, to comment. But I think that people maybe need to consider everything that we say in the public, whether it's sitting around this horseshoe or, you know, on social media or, you know, in interviews or at forums or basically anywhere where anybody can hear us, is, you know, part of our record in some ways. And that all is, is just as relevant to, you know, undermining free speech and impugning people's character and all of the above. And I think that it's just important to keep in mind that when we talk about what the public knows, I mean, the, the public can Google. I mean, there's AI, perplexity, ChatGPT that can look up pretty much anything any of us have ever said. And, you know, there have been some, some comments made about, you know, Ms. Savage and comments she made previously, and I don't know that it's fair to attack people's opinions. We, as council, get to make our decisions one of 12. And that one of 12 basically means that the voters of Bob's ward, Mr. Campbell's ward, elected him, and they elected him to make his decisions however they see fit. And if they don't like that, at the end of the four-year term, they can choose someone else. And that's, that's true for all of us. But whether I like Bob's comments or not, doesn't mean that I can use council rules to attack him or to suggest that they're somehow inappropriate. And I really enjoy sitting by Bob, I was telling him that tonight, because sometimes I get to lean over and whisper what I think, and he does the same thing. He might not want to sit by me, I don't know. But I think that that's important, and I think it's important that council, you know, has interactions like that. And, you know, the public maybe doesn't see that as much, but I think it's, it's important for people to know that those interactions occur as well. And everything we do, everything we do when we act with each other on Wednesdays at committee meetings, on Monday meetings, in the in-between forums, how we work together. And, you know, I could probably go on on that a lot further, but I think I'm gonna leave it at that for the moment on that topic. I just want to say that I appreciate the effort that a lot of people put into this. You know, there were some comments made from the public tonight, and it's unfortunate that group of folks got up and left during my comments now. But I will just say to Griffin at the Missoulian, turns out that you did put something in your article about the gentleman with the Southgate Crossing property living here for eight years. And I think it's unfortunate that so many people online and in public comments in this room have chosen, chosen to misinterpret or selectively take parts of those stories and trash someone because they don't like him or an outcome. And I think that's just as detrimental to democracy. You know, if we don't like someone, fine, but saying that someone who has lived and worked here for eight years is an out-of-stater is a real interesting, it's a real interesting take, and I think it's unfortunate. I think that, you know, the theme of our comments the last couple of weeks have been to remind everyone that, you know, everybody up here on council lives somewhere in town. We're all humans. We all go out and participate in the community in our own ways. And, you know, like me or not, like Bob or not, like Gwen or not, we're all making decisions as best we can with, you know, our values and the information we have in front of us. And I think that people should keep that in mind. Like, disagree with the decisions, you know? I can respectfully disagree with Mr. Campbell. We voted opposite tonight, but we can still get along. And it seems like some of the tenure, ten, tenor of public comments have gotten away from that, and I hope that people recognize that's part of this bigger conversation as well.
Thank you for your comments, Council Nugent. Council Campbell?
Thank you, ma'am mayor. I wasn't gonna make comment, but I appreciate my colleague, Councilman Nugent's comments. Yeah, it's good that, you know, we could sit alongside each other and have discussions and, you know, and we agree, sometimes we disagree, sometimes we just flat out have opposing views on whatever the case may be. But I'm not sure if I, why, why I would enjoy more to say, next you have those discussions or as we discussed, you being just opposite of me in the horseshoes so I can make eye contact with you when, you know, we discuss things like we discussed tonight. I enjoy that as well. But, yeah, I, I just, you know, you know, I just, you know, we all strive for stability. I think is bottom line here. And, you know, again, you know, we've had this discussion, you know, not too long ago for very different reasons, some unfortunate reasons, but, you know, and we handle it different ways. We handle frustration different ways. And we've had, I've had votes, and I've brought, you know, things forward that didn't go my way, made me frustrated, and, you know, I, I found it, it doesn't mean a world of good to just get up, go out the back door, walk a lap around this half-block, maybe two times, might take three times at times, but then just come back in and sit down and pick up from where we left off. So that's all I had, thank you.
Right on. Thank you, appreciate that, Council Campbell. Council Jones?
So two things. First of all, if folks are driving by Rose Park on Brooks or Mount, please take a look. Some really great work has been done there with the Rose Garden that definitely needed some attention. We have a really active Rose Park Neighborhood Council Leadership Team. And Carly and Molly, you two are making it happen at Rose Park, so I want to say thank you. It looks beautiful. It has been, a portion of it has been redone where the rose beds are located. There are some new roses that have been planted, some new rose beds. The obelisk is getting some attention, and I know there is a master plan for Rose Park, so it, there's a lot more to do, but it's starting, and Parks has worked collaboratively with the folks on the leadership team, and things are happening, so that's really exciting. Secondly, I also wanted to address the dynamic tonight with our meeting. It's kind of hard going last because other people have said some of the, some of the thoughts I had, but I wanted to say, we are talking a lot about civil discourse these days and how we need to have civil discourse, and that's how our democracy will heal itself. And our rules try to set up a format so that we have civil discourse. I wanted to commend Mayor I wanted to commend Mayor Davis for running a good meeting. It is really hard running meetings when people are becoming emotional, becoming angry, getting out of their lane, call it whatever you want. That's why there are points of order to try and rein things back in at times. I've had to recess meetings also when it has been warranted. So I just want to say thank you for running a good meeting. It's, it's a really hard position to be in because we want people to be able to say what they need to say. But boy, how they say it certainly is important. So thank you for that.
I appreciate that, Counsel Jones. Thank you very much. Well, on that note, I'll go ahead and we'll wrap up. We'll adjourn our meeting. Thank you very much for your comments this evening and we are adjourned at seven thirty-four PM.